You can't tell this.
You've got one minute.
I think the clock is running.
I've got one minute. Can I make it to the office in about one minute?
No. You're quicker than I am.
You've got your key?
Looks lucky the door was open.
Mm-hmm. It's right there.
Four seconds to spare.
Call the meeting door. I'm on flag flip. The papers you need is?
My pledge.
My pledge is to declare to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
I'd like to welcome you to the October 20th meeting of the Board of Commissioners. Praise now that this meeting is being recorded in writing and also available for reading.
Could we have you mute your phones if you're not speaking, please? We're getting a lot of background noise.
And George, you need to talk louder. I'm barely hearing you.
Thank you.
All right. With the permission of my colleagues, I will lower my mask so I can be heard. Let me see, we have minutes of October 6, 2021.
I'd move for approval of the minutes from October 6, 2021. Second.
Honorable say aye.
Aye.
Any additions to the agenda?
No, 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 Laura.
None, all right. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to the commissioners on an item other than what is already on our agenda? We'll get into our business. We have three public hearings this morning. The first is regarding the East, Meacham East Livestock District. I'm not called on counsel to introduce that topic.
Thank you. The Umatola County received a petition to form a new livestock district. The tentative title for that district was by the petitioner called Meacham East Livestock District. It is generally four sections up by Meacham. It does meet the 2,000 acre minimum barreling. There's just a little bit in surplus of that. The main petitioner on this was Kent Madison. As required by law, this meeting was set by the Board of Commissioners. Notice of it was sent by certified mail to all of the property owners within the area of the proposed district, along with the property owners that were within 500 feet of it. Those were sent out, I believe, on September 29th. And so now it is before the Board to conduct a public hearing on it. If you do want to move forward with the formation, the process for it is, if you're in favor of it, then goes back to the petitioner and then the petitioner has to approach all of the property owners within the district and try to get a majority of them to consent to be in the district. So that even if you vote today to allow the formation to be moved forward, then the petitioner will have 90 days to gather the necessary signatures to officially bring the formation of the district. Are there any questions on the process?
One quick question I have is if a property owner and their spouse, that's two people, is that for the vote when he goes back to the vote of the people, each get a vote, is that correct?
Any property owner will have to sign. Yeah, if there was.
Thank you.
Quick question. Do we have consent from all the property owners that are inside the boundary lines?
That will be the next step.
Even the property owners inside the, okay.
Yeah, they're, the only signature at this point on the petition was Mr. Madison.
Okay, gotcha, thank you.
And if you have to Mr. Madison to go get the other 50% plus one more?
Yeah. And you have 90 days to do that.
Now, for clarification, is the, is the representation of the landowners based on individuals or based on the size of their, their holding within the?
It is not based on how much property they have. It's by name. And like, if it's like under a corporation name and on something else, then that would be two property owners, like husband and wife. But if they own multiple pieces of property under one name, they only get one, that counts as one.
What if they manage multiple pieces of property?
It's based on property ownership.
Yeah. So if one vote matters, you have multiple property owners.
Exactly, yeah, it is. I have one other quick question. Back to land ownership on the outside of, of the boundaries. Again, does he have to get signatures from the property owners that are concurrent or that connect to the property that's been designated?
It's only within the district.
Just within?
The statute does require, though, that we provide notice to those that are 500 feet out, but they do, they're not in the district and they will not have to have their signature.
Why would you send notice to the people? I know the answer, I just want you to say it. Why would you send notice to people, the board of the district?
Because they are impacted by a livestock district. Because even though they may not be in the district, if they have livestock, they're going to have to make sure it stays off the district. So if they border it, they will have to be putting a fence up if they want to keep their livestock in their property and outside the district.
All right, procedurally, I assume you would wish to hear first from those who are in favor of the district.
Right. Once you open the public meeting, and then I have two items that I'd like to add to the record too, once you open the public record.
Okay, now we're in hearing mode. We'll be in hearing mode now. Okay.
So the public meeting's open?
Yeah. The hearing, the hearing is open.
There were two people that were unable to make it and one that their view is known on this. The first is from Steve McClellan, who's the Range Line Resource Manager for Hancock Forest Management. Hancock Forest has some property that would be within the proposed district, as well as quite a bit others that are outside the district. He indicated that.
I can't hear you.
I can't hear you. If you take your mask, I mean, if you've got to spread them all out.
They indicated that some of their property would be in and some of it out, which would complicate it for them. And so they would prefer that their property be out of the district. That applies to Hancock Timberland, System Global, and Golden Pond. The actual property owner that's within the district would be proposed district through his Hancock life insurance. And he just requested that this be made part of the record because he is unable to attend a meeting. And also received an email from Charmaine Bussler, who owns property that would be within the proposed district. And she indicates that she would agree to the proposed district. She's an owner of two lots on Wapati Lane in Meacham that forehead of cattle had been wandering on. They created a dustful area and damaged my pond area. I was very relieved when they finally got picked up. I had no problems with cattle running around on designated land, just not my land. It would have been nice to know who owned the cattle and who had to call them to pick up. And she wasn't able to attend the meeting, but want this made part of the record. So those two items also will be added.
Can I ask a question at this point or, or no? Or wait on it?
Why don't you wait until you hear these? Unless you have a question, Doug.
Uh, Doug. My quick question, technical question. If Hancock were to remove themselves from this district, would there still be enough property?
No.
To form a?
Their property, if you look on the map, it's basically the northwest section.
Gotcha. Yeah.
And it's, if you keep going down, it's the northwest, it's 6205 in Section 27. It's primarily, I mean, there's some that isn't theirs, but primarily all of that section would be theirs. I think it's like roughly 300 or 400 acres.
Gotcha.
So that would fall with, under the 2,000 acre.
Gotcha.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of the district? Please come to the podium and identify yourself and your address.
Rocky Church, 52889 Carrington Lane in Meacham Lake. We don't live within that, but we want to amend to it. But we have the same problem, the cows come in there, they tear up things, they eat anything, they've knocked over property, they've damaged property. And we just have had an ongoing thing with these cows and it's just every year, my lake can't grow any flowers, you can't put anything out here. And they've knocked over two or three items of mine, one big cart. I'd have three people come in and help me stand it back up. So it's a, it's quite a problem and they, you know, they just, they tear up everything. And it's just really been a problem. We would like to see this passed because we want to amend to it to put in a livestock district and as amendment to theirs.
Okay, I would remind those on the phone, please mute your phones. We can't hear that whisper conversation. Thank you.
All right, anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of the district?
I'm Laura Madison, representing my husband, Kent Madison, who petitioned it. And the purpose was really so that if we, not opposed to free range, but just the ability when we call to find out, we don't even have the right to corral them, to have the brand inspector to, to know whose cattle they belong to. And so that was the whole purpose of the redistricting is at least give us a legal way of being able to corral cattle if they happen to be on your land causing damage or something. That, that allows the brand inspector to come out and identify the cows, as Charmaine stated. We didn't even have the right to identify the cows, to call the owner that, to come and get their cows after they had been on our land. So that was the point of the district is not opposed to free range, but having the ability to, to identify those cows and then, and notify the owner, and then they would be responsible for removing the cows.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Council, can you speak to that?
Basically, if you're in an open range, the cattle have the right to be wherever they want to be. And so you can't corral them. Now, I don't know, without corraling, I don't know if you could identify the cattle. And by then you could, you know, still, I believe, I don't, wasn't aware that the brand inspector wouldn't come, you know, if it's an open range. I don't know the answer to that one.
Would be interesting to get that interpretation. All right, anybody else wishing to speak in favor? Although, those wishing to oppose, is there anybody on the phone that wants to speak in favor?
For those of us who may be opposed, can you hear me?
Yes.
For those of us who may be opposed, I, I do have some questions. Can I, I have five questions. Can I ask those questions, please?
Yes, please first identify yourself and your address, and then, and then, yes, feel free to ask the questions.
The only address, well, my name is Rick Isaacson. And the only address that I have is, it's tax lot number 1400. We don't actually have a, a building on our, on our land. So it's immediately adjacent to Meacham itself and between Meacham and the freeway.
Okay.
Five questions. Go ahead.
I said fire away.
What is the result if passed on cattle drives or sheep drives through the proposed
Council, do you know that? I do know that there has been concern expressed about the ability to conduct sheep drives through the property.
Right, okay, so if you are doing a drive, if you can legally drive them on a public road in a livestock district, that's not an issue. Now, if you're going onto someone's private property, unless you have a consent in a livestock district, you can't do it. But if the concern is along a public road, they can, it won't be a violation.
Thank you. So if the district is, go ahead. If the district is, is, is passed, what is the result of domestic animals being released from confinement due to elk damage to fencing or tree fall damage to fencing, where that damage allows those domestic animals to escape into the proposed district?
If you're in a district, any livestock, it is, you can be held liable for the damage caused by those, that livestock, and you will have to fix a fence in order to contain them on your property.
Well, okay, so what we're doing is we're putting the onus on the livestock owners for damage that's beyond their control, is that correct?
Basically, in a livestock district, you're putting the burden on the livestock owner to keep the animals on their property. And then they would be liable for the damage that would be caused by that livestock if it's off-site of their property, not on their property.
Okay, what precludes the subdivision, the Wapati Lane subdivision, from fencing the perimeter of their property to keep domestic animals out? In other words, provide exclusionary fencing?
They have that option now.
They have that option? Okay. What agency is responsible for policing this proposed district if passed?
Primarily, it falls within the Department of Ag, the brand inspector.
Okay, so this would require, this is a statement, not a question, I have one more. This would require then that the, that someone within the district contact the brand inspector if the, if the animals are gone. By the time the brand inspector gets there, I'm assuming no crime, no foul?
Well, I think that'd be a question up to the brand inspector, what evidence they would require to follow up. They might have pictures or things like that they could go by to.
Is there sufficient funding for that agency? In other words, the brand inspector? If this responsibility is added, and is there sufficient manning already? Not, not to add anyone, but is there already sufficient?
I have a question for that agency.
Okay, I have another question. Isn't it premature then to, to suggest that a district could be formed before that agency is, is, before it's discussed with that agency to find out what kind of burden this would place on that agency?
They do, they do get notice of a proposed livestock district.
Well, because of the reasons that, or the answers you just provided, I'm definitely opposed to the livestock district. I believe that the, the fact that the sheep, especially the, my, my place was part of the railhead sheep shipping operation some, at least 80, 80 years ago, I believe. It's been a way of life in Meacham for, for cattle and sheep and that sort of thing. I don't have any livestock. I leave my, my range open, my area open for, for elk and deer. And if an occasional sheep or an occasional cow were to get on my place, that's just fine. It's part of life in northeast Oregon. And it's part, definitely part of the history. And I do not believe that it's correct to place the burden, this additional burden, on land, on, on stock owners who already feel a pinch of, of many regulations that affect them having to do with riparian zones and, and you name it. They've, they've already been burdened with that sort of thing. This additional burden and the potential of having fines and that sort of thing goes beyond the pale. And I believe that this livestock district should not be approved. I believe the landowners should maintain the, I guess, the rights that they have where they, and by the way, I, the landowners who do have livestock do a wonderful job of keeping them out of fenced property, in my opinion. So that, that would be my, that would be my input. Thank you.
Others, others who wish to speak in opposition. You know the drill.
Including on the phone?
Well, right now we have someone here who has been ran in the floor. So go ahead.
I'm Ann Monkers, and my family is the Hoskins Ranch, and we have leased this property from several owners in that area and also from Hancock Forest Management. We started with Kinzuah, and we've worked all the way through the owners over the years. We've been up in that country approximately 80 years. I agree with everything Mr. Isom said, or Isaacson, I think his name is, sorry. And we fence in, we do all the fencing for our property. The tribe does their section north of us, Cunningham does their piece south of us. We do everything else, federal, state, and also private landowners in that same area. They don't do their half of the fence, sometimes because of age issues, and sometimes just because they don't know. And so it would be an extreme burden for us. We do it in May, we go over all the fence in May, we do it again in September, right before roundup, because that's the time of the year people are out, especially tribal members, are out hunting and getting food for roundup for all their company. And we just feel like it's more of a burden than we can handle. The other problem is that we've been informed by Hancock that if this district goes through, then we're done on that property. They'll close everything up that's theirs, they'll gate the roads, they'll put up more cameras, and on and on it goes. So if you're out there, you're going to be a trespasser. So there's the other side of that, their side of it too. So, anyway. We were talking earlier about stray livestock, and I was looking into the statutes for the state of Oregon last night. And I know that you have to try and identify those cattle within five days of signing or as soon as possible. And I don't know if that attempt was made with, I heard someone say that there were forehead of cattle on their property that caused a lot of damage. I believe that was in your testimony. And at the store, they asked us about those cattle. And when we went out there to look, we couldn't, couldn't find them. But the second time we were there, we did see them on the road. And we didn't recognize the marks on them either at that time. But then later on, within that week, we saw who, who they belonged to, we figured it out. And we notified them, and they said they'd already got them. So I'm not sure what happened in that situation, but always before, all of our neighbors have been so good about letting us know when their cattle, when our cattle happen to be someplace, if they see a problem with it. And the livestock district actually puts more of the burden on everyone in that district. Neighbors, people who are doing the livestock, running livestock up there, even somebody who just has milking goats for their own need. And you know how hard it is to keep goats and sheep in somewhere. But I am opposed to this livestock district. And I would just like to say I'd appreciate your help in this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Someone on the phone indicated they wish to speak?
That's correct. My name is, my name is Robin McCall. I own a property out on Road 3030, 687, USFS Road 3030. I am directly in the middle of all this. I, I totally agree with what Ann said and the gentleman previous. We live in a livestock universe. All that Kent Madison is doing is driving cattle ranchers out of business. He wants somebody else to pay for his fencing. It has nothing to do with anything but that. All these people that are buying property, very few of them on Wapati Lane, will be liable if their livestock gets out on the highway. So if somebody decides to hit or accidentally hits their livestock, they will get sued and they will lose their property. I choose to fence my property off. I have horses. I work with Monkers. If I see problems with their cattle, I call them. We're a family out there. And this is nothing to do with anything but trying to help him fence his property off. They want their property fenced off, then let them. But why is everybody else liable for it?
The others who wish to speak in opposition. I'm going to read into the record input that I received. First from Steve McClellan of Handchop Resources, left a message and called from Boise, he's unable to attend the hearing because of a medical issue with a member of his family. He represents Hancock Forest Products and oversees grazing as well as other areas. At first I received a message, I later talked to him in person, as well as Scott Madison, who's also opposed to the formation of the district. They object to the livestock district and are opposed as it stands. Hancock's have property that will be divided and some will be in and some out. First of all, they need to be all in or all out. Second, they prefer all out. In the second conversation, he stated that if the livestock district is formed, Hancock Forest Products will terminate all grazing in that area. In addition, Glenn Krebs from Cunningham Sheep called and expressed concern about their historic ability to trail sheep through that area, although he did not indicating, indicating uses the area for pasture. You people live up there, know that better than I. Concerns also been expressed regarding the fact this matter is only now coming to the attention of those involved, and the decision by the commissioners could be proven to it. All right, any other input, comments before we go out of hearing? All right, we're back in the regular meeting.
Sure. One more comment.
Again, it is not against, it is not against cattle, uh, rancher, you know, grazing cattle, nor passing animals through. It's none of those. On Wapiti Lane, the reason we took down all the old fences is because on the fish and gains wildlife recommendations on elk habitat area, and that was the sole purpose. The other is, in the statutes, which I'm, I'm surprised we didn't have it in front of us, there is not legal for us to, if it's not easy to identify them, you're correct on that, is, that's what we were not able to do. And so, it brought to light that, basically, we have no rights on collecting those cattle or identifying them, so the brand inspector could come and notify the owners of those cattle. How rapid this is, I don't know. But that's the sole purpose of this, is that we had concern of people in the area that have been dealing with these issues off and on. It has nothing to do with, with stopping or slowing down cattle, um, grazing and those kinds of things. And it's just up to the property owners then, if they don't want the cattle in their, in their property. So, that was the whole purpose of this.
All right, any other comment before we go out of hearing?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm gonna call everyone one more time. Um, I, I believe that the Maddisons have had enough experience between their place in Echo, that they fully understand the fencing laws, our fencing policies of the state of Oregon. I agree with what Robyn was saying and, uh, what I've heard from my neighbors over the year, years. People around Meacham are independent folks. There's no doubt about that. They like their independence. They like being up there. But they're also accountable for themselves and their property. And, uh, we have always been accountable for our property as much as we can. I mean, the wolves chase the elk. They get through the fence. We try to get to it as soon as possible. Somebody lets us know that our cattle may be somewhere they shouldn't be, so we get in right away and we take care of it. But, uh, the cattle that were in question on this property, the actual owner of the cattle, had no idea where they were at. And, uh, he was never notified until later on. It was the neighbors that ended up telling him where they were. So, I think every person in that area needs to be accountable for their own property and responsible for it. So, without that accountability, then people surely aren't gonna be responsible. But as far as I know, and the, as far as my mother knows, in the eighty-some years we've been up there, people have been good about their property, taking care of it, and proud to do so. And I think that the Maddisons need to be in amongst that group of, of people. Thank you.
Another comment, on the phone or in person? All right, we'll close the hearing and go into deliberation.
My first comment is, I, I definitely think we're extremely premature on this. If Hancock is unwilling to consent to being in this district, it seems like there's not a district. There's not enough, not enough property. And I think, at that, at this point, I, I'm not sure how we move forward at all.
Does Hancock have the right to go out?
Once a district is formed, a landowner-
I could get this in. I just had to, I've been listening on the phone, 'cause I wanna make sure I have something.
Can you please mute your phones?
Okay.
Thank you.
That's what he says.
You're still not muted.
Um, if a livestock district is formed, then a property owner can petition to be removed from a district after it's formed. But at this point, the only, I mean, it would be a majority that would weigh. So, I mean, Hancock just can't say voluntarily, remove me from the district. They would, they just have one vote, basically.
So, if they were removed after the district was formed, would there still be a district, even though it's under two thousand acres?
Then there would be a problem there, yes.
I guess my feelings are, I would rather address that problem up front than...
What would, what would the process be if a livestock district, and I realize it's a huge if, but if the livestock district was formed, how hard would it be for, for Hancock to pull out of the district?
Uh, that'd be, the board has that authority on a petition.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. Could you repeat that?
The board does have the authority to do that, the board of commissioners, to remove property from a district.
But again, like Commissioner Dorn said, that would drop it below the two thousand.
And that would create a problem then.
Okay.
I, I, I guess my feelings is we're way ahead of the game here.
Okay. If you want to, you could continue this matter to allow the petitioners additional time, or you can just take action, um, denying it, and then they could come back with a different proposal.
Again, my concern is that two months ago, we heard about the possible formation of the district, and didn't hear a word until yesterday or today from anyone involved. That's what it seems to me. I agree with Commissioner Dorn. This is Frank Tour. We have some questions. We have a number of questions, uh, relative to, uh, not the least of which is the ability of the Department Ag or through the brand inspector to even tell us whether or not they have the capacity to, to monitor this. So, it's a pleasure of the board.
I, I'm torn between voting to decline it, um, just knowing what's happening in the future, and I'm not sure that that's a legitimate, legitimate reason at this point. But I, I am more than willing to delay this till we have more information.
I'm comfortable with the delay.
Do we have to cancel? Do we have to specify a date?
Uh, yes, to avoid the notice problem. Yes, we do have to, uh, give a specific-
Let's avoid that problem. So, is it like sixty days, or?
Uh, that, that's flexible. It's, it can be longer if you want it to be.
It says ninety days.
I, I think a minimum of sixty, but I'll leave it up to you guys. Been doing it longer than me.
I was thinking ninety days, but is that out of line?
No, you, at this point, you have not stopped any, started any clocks. The only clock that would be is if you actually started, approved the formation moving forward, then the petitioner has ninety days to finish up the process. At this point, you can continue as long as you want to.
So, if we did it ninety days, it's gonna be, basically, put us into January, then the process takes another thirty days. If we approve it, it takes another thirty days, and then he has to get the signatures. So-
Uh, it'd be from when you make a decision, then there'd be ninety days.
Okay, so, what, what I'm trying to do is figure out, are we gonna, if, if we were to move forward, are we gonna put people in the middle of moving cattle in the spring, right, right, right in the middle of cattle in the springs? Or, on the flip side, are we gonna put people not knowing whether they have to build fence or not within almost a week? So, I, I, I think a minimum of ninety days, the more I think about it. Um, I, I don't wanna put the, I don't wanna put people on either side of the issue in the middle of the spring, cattle moving and calving, and having to try to figure out if they need to build fence or don't build fence, or whether they can move cattle in or not.
And I think at ninety days, we can address that issue too. We can go forward from there.
As part of the record, I, I, it does concern me that, that we are impacting the livelihood of, of people who, who historically have operated in that area, which has economic consequences. And also, if our timing is wrong, uh, while aware of the fact you don't go out and find pasture the next day, it's quite a process.
Yeah.
So, do you feel that ninety days is appropriate?
Like ninety days is appropriate, and I, I, I think after hearing the testimony, just like we have, the petitioner may, may want to redraw the lines or, or look at a different avenue to solve the issues that they're, that they think they have. But, um, if they wanna go forward, I, I think that they need to bring more people on board, especially property owners in there, to, to have a solid, a solid boundary. I, the last thing I wanna do is learn how to, to dissolve a livestock district. That's, that's not a chore I wanna learn to do. So, um-
I'm curious, technically, is there a period when the cattle are not there?
Generally, most, um, contracts say that you need to be out by the first of November, in by the first of June.
June.
Okay, so November first, okay.
But that's only on, uh, public lands and private properties, like, that's the contract with Hancock. Private landowners, the smaller ones that we lease from, they don't have a, a set schedule.
Are you, uh, so, I know, probably shouldn't be asking these, but Anne, different than the, the, uh, federal lands, are most of your Hancock's a year-to-year agreements, or are they multi- year?
Most of your BLM and Hancock properties are on a year-to-year basis.
Do you mirror the federal stuff?
Correct.
Okay.
And they monitor our grazing also. BLM out of Baker City, and then Hancock was through McLoughlin. They, they monitor our grazing.
Okay, thank you.
I was curious about the dates, because this is not a, this is not a typical year. Um, the grass has caused a lot of people to go out early.
Correct. But it's generally not the grass so much as the water. We're fortunate in that we have a real good water supply on the Hancock properties and those private entities.
Please knock on wood right now.
Yeah, yeah.
I've had personal, personal experience of having to take cattle off a very nice pasture up there because the water was gone. So, all right.
Ms. White?
Oh, go ahead.
Oh, I was just saying, Mr. Chair, I've moved, and we continue this for ninety days to give more time for information.
Um, could you make that part of that motion, the actual date? Anne, it looks like the second meeting in January eight, is January nineteenth.
So moved.
I do think it would be, we have, we have, I think, the questions as a matter of record, but we need to make sure that we do our due diligence in getting answers to those questions.
Yeah, and I think it, it is rightfully so. We should also make sure that the petitioners will actually have the questions that have come up and the concerns, so that they know that they're out there.
Before we vote cancel, the last time we dealt with this, I guess, both times we dealt with this, we did take the opportunity as a, as a commission to actually view the district. Can we do that? I thought that was helpful when you did that. Okay, long fair say aye?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Thank you. Thank you all for coming.
You're more than welcome to stick around for a public hearing on the cattle.
Sit the lady.
But if I were you, I would make the nearest exit.
Thanks, everyone, for attending.
Thank you.
That's just a warm-up for Bob.
At this point in time, I will turn the gavel over to, uh, Commissioner Schaefer, who will oversee two, uh, planning hearings.
Ladies and gentlemen, I call this ladies' hearing before the Umatilla County Board of Commissioners to order. My name is John Schaefer. I'm a member of the Umatilla County Board of Commissioners and board liaison to the planning department. Our role today is to conduct a public hearing concerning Oregon Department of Transportation's request to add an existing quarry, Vincent Canyon Quarry, to the Umatilla County Comprehensive Plan List of Gulf Five Protected Site, and apply the aggregate resource overlay zone to the entire quarry site. The property is located up the north side of Oregon State Highway seventy-four, identified on the accessory map as Township One, Range Thirty, East Tax Lot Nineteen Zero One. The property is eight point zero acres and zone explicit farm use. The criteria for approval are found in Oregon Administrative Rule Six Six Zero dash zero two three dash zero zero four zero dash zero zero five zero, and Six Six Zero dash zero two three dash zero one eight zero, Prent Three, and Prent Five, and Prent Seven, and UCDC Sections One Five Two Point Four Eight Seven dash Four Eight Eight. I'll begin the hearing by asking staff to summarize the application. I will then ask the applicant to testify, followed by those in favor of the application. Then, any persons in opposition or who have concerns or questions will have a chance to speak. If there is opposition or questions, staff may respond to them. The commissioners also may ask the staff and witness questions throughout the hearing until the record closes. Any person with an interest in today's agenda may offer relevant and written testimony, but please, only speak when I identify you for that purpose. When you testify, please begin by clearly stating your name and address. If you represent somebody else, please say so. If you have any exhibits you want us to consider, such as a copy of your testimony, photographs, petitions, or other documents that are physical evidence, please provide it to me or the staff. It will be marked as part of the record. Any questions?
We are in hearing.
Yes, you put us in here, you move. So, so at this time, I would like to call for any objections, bias, conflict of interest, declaration of exportee contact, and objections to jurisdiction. Seeing none, I'm gonna call for the staff to report. Mr. Walder?
Thank you, Commissioner Schaefer, Bob Walder, County Planning Director. And the applicant, ODOT, is requesting to add its existing Vincent Canyon Quarry to the Umatilla County Comprehensive Plan List of Gulf Five Protected Sites. In addition, ODOT requests the county apply the aggregate resource overlay zone to the entire quarry. The process of approval by the county involves review by the planning commission with a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners. The first evidentiary hearing was held before the planning commission at their September twenty-third meeting. During the virtual hearing, the planning commission heard testimony in favor of the proposed amendment. Uh, there was no, uh, testimony in opposition. A copy of the planning commission meeting minutes is attached. The proponents, ODOT and the consultant of the amendment, presented evidence that the aggregate site meets the quantity and quality standards required by the state to establish the site as a large significant site. The proponents requested that the county recognize that the resource site and the conflicting uses are important to each other, and therefore, the conflicting uses within fifteen hundred feet of the buffer area should be allowed, but limited, in order to protect the Gulf Five site. This protection would be accomplished by requiring a waiver of remonstrance prior to final approval of any, uh, conflicting use within the fifteen hundred foot impact area. A primary concern of the planning commission was a noise, was noise associated with blasting should any of the conflicting uses choose to locate within the fifteen hundred feet of the Vincent Quarry. The planning commission requested a condition of approval that requires ODOT to provide forty-eight hours advance notice to landowners within fifteen hundred feet of the subject property prior to blasting. The planning commission found that the proposed Vincent Canyon Quarry meets the requirements to be established as a large significant site, and that the quarry should be protected by the AR overlay zone. The planning commission voted unanimously to recommend approval by the Board of Commissioners. Considering the recommendations of the planning commission and, uh, information presented in the record, the board is asked to make a decision whether or not to adopt the proposed amendments to add the Vincent Quarry to the Umatilla Comprehensive Plan List of Gulf Five Protected Sites and apply the AR overlay zone to the entire quarry. I do need to make one correction. Um, in the front of the memo, it says the property is eight point zero three acres. It's actually fourteen point three zero. That was a discrepancy that we caught in the memo, but it is correct in the findings document. Um, it includes fourteen point three zero acres. Are there any questions for staff?
That change in acreage won't, won't make any difference to the rest of the report?
Um, no, the, the findings, um, are accurate, and the maps that we have are accurate. Um, the fourteen point threes- The 14.30 acres includes the entire tax lot, Tax Lot 1901.
Thank you. Any other questions? Hearing done at this point, then I ask to hear from the applicant or and/or representative.
Chair Schaefer? Carla McLean? Hi. Yeah, Carla McLean, representing ODOT, Carla McLean Consulting LLC, 170 Van Buren Drive, Umatilla, Oregon, 97882. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yeah.
Perfect, thank you. So, well, good morning. Thank you for your attention to this request for the Vincent Canyon Quarry site. Others in virtual attendance from ODOT will also be providing evidence and testimony in support of this request. A little bit of background, ODOT acquired this site in 1953. Over the past decade or so, ODOT has been working to confirm that its various sites throughout eastern Oregon are properly permitted and, in most cases, protected as a Goal Five resource. This particular past year, six sites were identified. Moving forward on three of them, this being one, well, two of them will be heard today in front of you, Vincent Canyon and Butter Creek. As Bob Walder indicated in the record, there is a letter, there's evidence that shows that the site does meet both the quantity and the quality. On the quantity side, there's more than 525,000 tons of material, exceeding the 500,000-ton requirement. And then the letter also provides evidence that it meets both the standards for both air degradation and soundness. If you have real specific questions about those things, I will defer that testimony to the ODOT expert. The requirements in this, in the rule, Division 23, which is how we, in Chapter 660, is how we go about protecting natural resources. For aggregate, it requires that we evaluate or identify a 1,500-foot impact area. That has been identified, and that is the area that ODOT is seeking protections. The letter of remonstrance that Mr. Walder spoke to earlier, we can get into more of the detail of that as we work through this if needed, but we're asking for protections of the site and for some limitations of potential activities in that impact area. For Vincent Canyon, the area around the quarry is used for rangeland and open space. The nearest residence is approximately two miles to the west, kind of at the intersection of Butter Creek and Highway 74, Gerdane Lane. They all kind of intersect there. The only built site, built infrastructure in the 1,500-foot impact area is actually Highway 74. There are no other structures. There's no homes, there's no residences. It's just open rangeland and open space there. Conflicts, therefore, due to noise, dust, other discharges are not anticipated due to the remote nature of this quarry site and the fact that there's no conflicting uses or activities within that impact area. There are no public airports or other known Goal Five resources there, and no conflicts are identified or anticipated with agricultural practices. Even though no conflicts were identified, ODOT went ahead and submitted as part of its application, the analysis, the EASY analysis, EASY stands for environmental, economic, social, and energy, and it's the four factors that have to be analyzed when you're looking at Goal Five resources to determine what impacts they are. And the EASY analysis basically says, you know, what happens if you allow it and limit all conflicts? What happens if you allow it and mitigate or manage for conflicts? Or what happens if you deny it? What is, what are the impacts? And that is included in the staff report, and the staff have done an excellent job of evaluating that. The county determined, and this is in the staff report, that, again, no conflicting uses, but supported the imposition of the waiver of remonstrance as an appropriate measure to balance the needs of the state to protect the resource and the needs of adjacent landowners to engage in certain land use activities. To be clear, ODOT is not asking that activities not be allowed within the impact area, but that people who sit in the impact area are made fully aware that there is an aggregate site there. There could be activities at that aggregate site, including blasting, mining, crushing, processing, stockpiling of aggregate material. And the remonstrance basically says it comes in place of their ability to claim harm based on those activities. So, again, this is not a request to harm any farming or ranching activities, but to protect ODOT from future claims of harm from the mining operation. Working with the staff at Umatilla County Planning Department, they do not have a full program yet developed to implement the Chapter 660, Division 23 requirements to achieve Goal Five protections. So we worked with them on how to achieve that as the county moves forward at some point in making additional changes to your comprehensive plan development code to fully implement the requirements of Division 23. In that, we asked for them to find a way to map and condition the full impact area in addition to applying the significant resource overlay zone or the aggregate resource overlay zone. The aggregate resource overlay zone kind of inherently has a 500-foot area or impact area inherent in it, but it doesn't map that specifically. And so we asked for it to be increased to 1,500 feet and to work with us to find a way through their mapping program to map that so that they could be flagged if anything happens within that impact area so that these conditions can be adequately applied to those potentially conflicting uses. Also, as part of the applicant, we, application, we did analyze all of the state, the 14 statewide planning goals, and staff found they were all consistent. So, in conclusion, we provided this testimony and other evidence to support the request to, one, that the Vincent Canyon Quarry site of just shy of 15 acres, Bob made that correction, thank you, to 14.3, be listed within the Umatilla County Comprehensive Plan as part of Finding 41 and within the list of aggregate sites under Policy 41 in compliance with the listing of this quarry in the technical report as a 3C significant site. Two, that Umatilla County apply the aggregate resource overlay zone to the subject property to allow mining, processing, and stockpiling on the site. And three, to amend the comprehensive plan map or other mechanism by mapping the 1,500-foot impact area and through the comprehensive plan listing, achieve the Goal Five requirement of protecting the resource by limiting residential and social gathering uses and require those uses to waive their rights to remonstrance against the aggregate operations allowed by this decision within the impact area to protect that aggregate resource from encroachment and nuisance complaints. So I want to thank you for your consideration, and I appreciate any questions you have. And then, again, there's other ODOT staff available today to answer any specific questions you may have related to operations, how it was deemed significant under the quality and quality, quality and quantity requirements, or other operational questions that you may have. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you. Any other people want to speak in favor of the petition? Okay, hearing done, I'm going to call for any opposition. Anybody want to speak in opposition? Okay, hearing done, I'm going to call for any comments from public agencies.
We didn't have any. I didn't receive any for this.
None of this. Okay, applicant, thank you. No reason for rebuttal, and Mr. Chair, I think we're ready to close the hearing.
Your hearing. Your hearing.
Okay. Any other questions from the board before we close the hearing?
None.
So I see no reason to delay this.
Not, Mr. Chair, it's closed, hearing. Hearing is closed, so now we are ready for deliberation.
I see no reason for deliberation either.
I'm good.
You call the motion or we call for it?
You call for it.
Okay. At this time, I request a motion.
I move to approve the.
Is there a ordinance memo?
Yes, there is.
Aye.
Next, break.
Do you make the motion?
Yes.
I'm having a really hard time hearing this committee, but I would like to give some testimony on this ordinance that you're trying to pass.
Go ahead, Bob.
Sorry, Commissioner Schaefer, this is for the Vincent Canyon Quarry, and the hearing is closed. Are you wanting to speak for this hearing or the Butter Creek?
Which hearing are you referring to? Vincent, the Vincent Canyon Quarry or Butter Creek Quarry?
Neither. I was referring to your livestock history that you're trying to put through a beacon.
Sir, that's been continued for 90 days until January 19th. We didn't take any action on that. That's been pushed further.
Sir, thank you much for your consistency, for your time, guys. Continue on my apologies.
You got permission.
Do you have a witness on that one?
Yes, I move that we approve ordinance number 202, 1 day, 09.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, any further discussion? All in motion, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
You can continue to provide leadership.
Okay, we are going to go back into hearing mode. And ladies and gentlemen, I call this land use hearing before the Umatilla County Board of Commissioners to order. Again, my name is John Schaefer, a member of the Umatilla County Board of Commissioners and board liaison to the planning department. Our role today is to conduct a public hearing concerning the Oregon Department of Transportation's request to add an existing quarry to Butter Creek Quarry to the Umatilla County Comprehensive Plan List of Goal Protected Significant Sites and apply the aggregate resource overlay zone to the entire quarry site. The property is located on the northeast side of Butter Creek Road, identified on the Cessers Map as Township 2, North, Range 27 East, Tax Lot 2700. The property is 4.76 acres and is zoned EFU. The criteria for approval are found in Oregon Administrative Rule 660-023-0040-0050 and 660-023-010, Prin 3, 5, and Prin 7, and UCDC Sections 152.487-488. I'll begin the hearing by asking staff to summarize the application. I will then ask the applicant to testify, followed by those in favor of the application. Then any persons in opposition or who have concerns or questions will also have a chance to speak. If there is opposition or questions, staff may respond to them. The commissioners also may ask the staff and witnesses questions throughout the hearing until the record closes. Any person with an interest in today's agenda may offer relevant oral and or written testimony, but please only speak when I identify you for that purpose. When you testify, please begin by clearly stating your name and address. If you represent somebody else, please say so. If you have any exhibits you want us to consider, such as a copy of your testimony, photographs, petitions, or other documents or physical evidence, please provide it to me or to the staff. It will be marked as part of the record. Any questions? At this time, I'm going to call for any abstentions, bias, conflict of interest, declaration of extricate contact, and objections to jurisdiction. Seeing none, we move forward to the staff report. Mr. Walder, what is yours?
All right, thanks, Commissioner Schaefer. Again, Bob Walder, Planning Director. This applicant is, application is much the same as the last one. ODOT is requesting to add the Butter Creek Quarry to the Umatilla County Comprehensive Plan List of Goal Five Protected Sites. In addition, they requested the county apply the aggregate resource overlay zone to the entire quarry. The process by the county involves review by the Planning Commission with a recommendation to the Board. And, again, the first evidentiary hearing for this one was also held at the September 23rd Planning Commission meeting. During the virtual hearing, the Planning Commission heard testimony both in favor and in opposition of the proposed amendment. Those meeting minutes are included in your packet. The proponents, ODOT and the consultant of the amendment, presented evidence that the aggregate site meets the quantity and quality standards required by the state to establish a site as a large significant site. The proponents requested that the county recognize that the resource site and the conflicting uses are important to each other, and therefore, the conflicting uses within the 1,500-foot buffer area should be allowed but in order to protect the Goal Five site, but limited to protect the Goal Five site. This protection would be accomplished through the requiring of a waiver of remonstrance prior to final approval for any conflicting uses within the 1,500-foot impact area. Testimony in opposition to the request was heard from nearby property owner, Mr. John Luciani. Mr. Luciani expressed concerns about the associated impacts of the proposed aggregate operation, as well as safety issues that could be created because of the curvature or the blind corner of Butter Creek Road in the area of the aggregate site. The Planning Commission voted five to three not to recommend approval by the Board. However, Planning Commissioners failed to make findings related to the substantive criteria of approval in order to justify their recommendation for denial. In addition, staff believes that much of the opponent testimony consisted of conclusory statements not related to the substantive criteria of approval. Considering the recommendations of the Planning Commission and information in the record, the Board is asked to make a decision whether or not to adopt the proposed amendments, adding the Butter Creek Quarry to the Comprehensive Plan List of Goal Five Protected Sites, and apply the AR overlay zone to the entire quarry. Commissioner Schaefer, before I move on, would it be all right if I included some agency comments we received?
Please do.
Okay. These aren't included in your packet, so, but they need to be added to the record. And since they aren't in your packet, I do need to just quickly read it into the record. This comment came from Umatilla County Public Works Director, Tom Fellows, and it's addressed to Ms. Teresa Penager from ODOT. And it says, "Please accept this letter of support for protection and approval to mine the Butter Creek Quarry, which is located just south of the intersection of Highway 207 and Butter Creek Road. This Oregon Department of Transportation quarry is located along a Umatilla County facility and can provide benefit to both ODOT and Umatilla County. As the bluff face is removed during the mining process, vision clearance will be improved, addressing safety concerns of residents. It has also been suggested that a reclamation benefit from the Butter Creek Quarry could be a curve correction along Butter Creek Road. Both opportunities benefit ODOT and Umatilla County, and both improve the long-term safety of Butter Creek Road. Prior to mining activity, ODOT will need to apply for an access permit. It is appreciated that ODOT has provided, in the context of the Butter Creek Quarry, the requirements that ODOT places on their contractors to implement certain requirements concerning safety. Those include having wildland firefighting equipment on-site, obtaining necessary erosion and sediment control plans, having site-specific pollution control plans, having protocols in place to assure vehicles traveling through the site can be cleaned, to limit the spread of debris and noxious vegetation, to control fugitive dust, and to maintain a safe work and travel zone through the provision of traffic control measures related to ingress and egress movement. Umatilla County Public Works is part of the access permit process with set requirements for appropriate signage, flaggers, and daylight operating hours to be applied during the initial blasting operations designed to create the initial staging area of the quarry site. Umatilla County Public Works has partnered with ODOT for many projects over the years with the cooperation during the historic flooding of 2020, a good example. Future mining of the Butter Creek Quarry is another opportunity for partnering to increase inventory of available rock in this part of Umatilla County and to achieve a better transportation system for the residents of and visitors to the county. Should you or others have questions about this letter, please reach out, and that was Tom Fellows." So, we need to enter that into the record. I'll provide a copy here.
Thank you.
Could you help me understand, are these quarries used occasionally or every day?
I can touch on that briefly, and it'd probably be a good question for ODOT. I don't believe they'll be used very frequently. I think the intent is to provide aggregate resources for construction improvement projects that ODOT has planned. So it could be that, you know, the quarry would sit inactive for a period of several years. for a period of several years, just depending on, um, the need, um, for, for, uh, providing aggregate to those projects. But I believe they could speak to that as well.
So, safety concern isn't like every day?
That's correct, correct. It wouldn't, and my understanding is it wouldn't be like you would see with a commercial quarry, um, you know, like, um, Pioneer Asphalt, for example. Would, you wouldn't have that daily truck traffic or blasting, um, frequent blasting or, um, move more, movement of aggregate, um, it'd be much more irregular.
Along those same lines, I would assume that the plan would be bring in a mobile crusher, spend a couple of weeks in there, create the product, and then, and then just stockpile it.
Yeah, I, I, my understanding of most of, um, ODOT's operations for, for this type of quarry would probably be that they wouldn't have permanent, uh, processing equipment in there. I would, I'd expect it to be more mobile and probably go to different job sites. Some of their larger quarries that maybe they use for, um, maintenance, I'm thinking of like MECAM, maybe they do have more permanent equipment set up up there. Again, that'd be a good question for them.
The big quarry, I think it's on Caillou's Road, I'm not sure. It's by not Free Water. I think it's a private quarry, is that right?
Um, I-
It's the one that got bought by CRH.
I, I think so, yeah, yeah.
And that's, that's different, that's like used every day?
Yeah, that, that would be more of a commercial operation.
Good.
If I'm thinking of the same one.
Okay, any other questions, staff? Okay, this time I want to hear from the applicant and/or the representative.
Good morning again, Commissioners. Thank you again, Carla McLean of Carla McLean Consulting LLC, one seventy Van Buren Drive, Umatilla, Oregon, nine seven eight eight two, representing ODOT in this situation. And given some of the questions that you've already raised, um, I have no doubt that Scott or Paul or Teresa will be joining in to follow me to make sure we get all of your questions answered about this site. ODOT purchased this particular piece of property in nineteen forty-six. Um, so it's actually been in ODOT's ownership longer than the Vincent Canyon site. Um, over the, again, over the past decade or so, ODOT has been working to properly permit and protect it with goal five protections, um, their inventory. Uh, and so here we are in front of you now with Butter Creek. Again, there is a letter in the record that shows that, uh, there are five hundred and forty thousand tons of material um, and that the material exceeds the requirements for both air degradation and soundness. Uh, some of this is a repeat, so I'm just going to kind of hit the highlights here. Uh, same fifteen hundred foot impact area, a little more activity along Butter Creek Road. There's a little more, uh, more residential use. Um, some more intensive farming and agricultural activities, but within the fifteen hundred foot impact area specifically, there are no homes. Uh, the nearest residence is to the northwest, just outside of that. Uh, and then there's a few more homes closer to the intersection with Highway two oh seven. And then to the south, there are a couple of homes, uh, some, uh, outside of the impact area, some distance. And then, um, more homes actually in Moro County, uh, at Pine City. So, there's a little more activity around this particular site. We did a little more, um, intensive evaluation of those activities. There are two hay covered, there's at least one and maybe two hay cover structures within the impact area, but there, again, there's no residential units. Uh, there is some agricultural practices, there's some irrigated eggs specifically, um, in the, um, the Butter Creek, uh, drainage, uh, the area there. Uh, and then there's dryland farming up on the bluffs, um, and more irrigated farming further to the north of this activity. Uh, again, we did the easy analysis, uh, provided that in addition, even though there were no specific comment, uh, conflicts that were identified within the impact area. Uh, same kind of questions around the program to achieve goal five. We're asking for the significant resource, uh, or aggregate resource overlay zone to be applied, uh, and then to make, have protections within the fifteen hundred foot impact area and do that, uh, through the, a condition that allows for the waiver of remonstrance. Again, another evaluation of the all fourteen statewide planning goals, and staff found those to be, um, consistent. As identified, there was opponent testimony. Um, Mr. Luciani did present testimony. Uh, he did not, as part of his presentation, provide any specific criteria that he was speaking to, um, but instead made statements about safety without providing specific instances or evidence to support the, his assertions. Uh, thank you, um, Mr. Walden for reading Mr. Fellows' rec, um, letter into the record. Um, ODOT does put that forth as, um, addressing some of those concerns. Uh, clearly, an access permit will have to be, um, obtained from the county prior to work at the Butter Creek Quarry, and Mr. Fellows has the right to put the quote, um, conditions on that that he's identified, uh, in that letter. I think it should be, uh, important to note the portion of the letter that specifically speaks to, uh, the safety of, um, both, um, ODOT and ODOT contractor workers who would be at the site as well as travelers, um, on Butter Creek Road that would be going, uh, about their daily business in front of, in front of the particular quarry site. Um, we, based on his testimony, we did some, um, uh, some additional discussion and inquiry. I, I want to say that we reached out also to Public Works um, and through folks within the Survey Department of Public Works, determined that there have been some traffic counts that have been done on Butter Creek Road. There were some done in two thousand and seventeen, and then again, previously to that in nineteen ninety-seven. So, they're about twenty years apart, and the most current data is just almost, um, five years old. Um, the average daily trip count, uh, so it was, um, the information that, um, was relayed to me was that the, the, the generation, the, the counting device was fairly close to the intersection with two oh seven, not at the intersection, but so northwest of the quarry site and not quite to the, to the intersection. And the average speed was thirty-four miles an hour for the traffic count done in night, in two thousand and seventeen. And I think that further supports it was closer to the intersection than not because people were not up to full speed or were, were decelerating to come to the stop sign at the intersection. But in two thousand and seventeen, the average daily trip count was twenty, twenty-nine vehicles. Twenty-four of those were cars, five of those were trucks or buses. So, um, well, they couldn't tell me the specific timing of the trip count. It was sometime during two thousand and seventeen. Um, they did assure me that they take at least seven days of, of, um, information and then average it to come up with the, the twenty-nine. So, that would be an average of a weekend, um, and then daily trips. So, it's a fairly low number. It is, however, a three hundred percent increase from the nineteen ninety-seven number, which was seven. Um, so there has been some growth in the area, and some of that could be just the timing of when the trip counts were done as well. Um, you know, maybe closer to harvest time or during hunting season versus not. Um, hard, hard to know. Um, and that road gets, um, agricultural use, it gets local, uh, local landowner and residential use. It has some recreational use. Um, so it's hard to know what all those trips are for, but those are fairly low numbers and would certainly be manageable through traffic, um, calming and traffic mitigation, safety measures with flaggers and those types of things. Uh, there was also comment about using different aggregate sites, and this might begin to get to some of your question about what types of sites are out there and how are they used. And again, if you want additional detail, there are, are ODOT staff that can provide more detail. But ODOT quarries are used for ODOT projects. Um, many of us see the quarries that are along, um, Interstate eighty-four as we travel between, say, the Hermiston Intersections and Boardman. And most, I think all of those sites along the highway, along the freeway there are owned by private individuals, and they are all commercial sites. And we see activity in those, uh, if not daily, certainly weekly or monthly. There's, there's regularly something going on. And those types of commercial quarries serve home building, commercial activities, building of data centers that have concrete walls. Um, so those, those co- commercial quarries are feeding that all the time. Uh, they're feeding gravel maybe for somebody's driveway. I mean, there's just a myriad of uses for those commercial quarries that don't happen in an ODOT quarry. So, an ODOT quarry is going to see activity when there is a project, project on an ODOT facility. So, we know that when improvements are made to an ODOT facility, those improvements are going to last twenty years, give or take, depending on the facility and what the improvement was. So, when you look at the number of facilities that ODOT has in an area around a quarry site, you can see that it may be a number of years before something, something goes back into that quarry site, before ODOT goes back into that quarry site to use it. Um, and ODOT owns a number of quarry sites. Some questions, some people have said, well, they've owned it since the fifties or the forties. Why, why now? Why are they now getting ready to use this? Because they have other quarry sites that they have been using, and some of those sites are reaching the end of their life. They don't have a, a, a stockpile of material that's going to last them another ten or twenty or forty or fifty years. And this particular resource will last them a long time, particularly when you consider, again, it's used for ODOT projects. And so, ODOT may be into this quarry site once every five or ten years to do a significant process where they would go in and blast and mine and crush and stockpile for an activity. Um, there was, um, there's also quite, also around this, well, why not use other sites? There's also costs that are associated with using a more remote site, um, the cost of hauling. And when you look at the easy analysis, one of the things that you're supposed to look at is the energy costs. And so, if you, if you, if you restrict the number of quarry sites that are available or that can be used, and ODOT is forced to use a quarry site that's some twenty or thirty or forty miles away, consider that they're going to have to pay the hauling costs of that rock from that further site to where they need to apply it. And those costs can increase the, um, those, that distance can increase that cost of hauling that rock significantly. And we can share more detail about that i- if you're interested in that. So, um, I, I think I've hit most of the points I want to, I want to make here. But ODOT is committed to safety, they're committed to doing things efficiently and effectively. Uh, one more thing I want to add too. When ODOT does a project, most, if not all of their projects are done through a contractor. So, it's not actually ODOT staff that are in there doing the mining, the crushing, and then doing the work on the road surface. It's often done through a bidding process, and it's a contractor. And that contractor, when they bid that job, can, can bid it using an ODOT source for the rock itself. Or they can choose to bid it and use their own source or a different source. So, there could be instances where ODOT uses a commercially available source rather than their own. But they still need their own sources available to them. So, there's a myriad things that happen with these particular sites. Um, but it's important, um, for ODOT to assure that they have material available because if you can't get to a commercial site, or if a commercial site isn't available, or if a commercial site, given the growth we've been seeing in the region in, in recent years, a lot of those commercial sites are very busy and may not have additional access or opportunity, um, to make that rock available. So, I, I, I hope we've answered the questions that have been raised and, and that you have identified. And if not, we're happy to answer further questions from, from the commission. So, again, the Planning Commission, I want to address the Planning Commission deliberation. It was not a unanimous decision, it was a five to three decision. Um, and I think it's important to note that the Planning Commission did not draft findings or create a clear path um, for staff to, um, present to you why denial. Um, it, um, it, it's unclear. It was unclear to us as the proponent, um, as to, um, how, how they came to that decision other than the emotion of the moment. Um, so again, in conclusion, we are asking you to, uh, not accept the recommendation of your Planning Commission, but to move forward and make it, uh, a determination in favor of the proponent. And again, um, like with the Vincent Canyon site for the Butter Creek site of, um, just under four point five acres, that it be listed in the Umatilla County Comprehensive Plan, again, as part of finding forty-one, and within the list of aggregate sites under policy forty-one, uh, that the, that you apply the aggregate resource overlay zone to the subject property and allow mining, processing, and stockpiling, and that you amend your Comprehensive Plan map by mapping the fifteen hundred foot impact area um, and through the Comprehensive Plan listing, achieve the goal five requirement of protecting the resource by limiting residential and social gathering uses and require those uses to waive their rights to remonstrance against aggregate operations allowed by this decision within that impact area to protect the aggregate resource from encroachment and nuisance complaints. Um, so again, I thank you for your consideration, and, um, we're, again, we're requesting that you overturn that Planning Commission decision or recommendation to deny and find in support of the applications submitted and the decisions outlined. And I appreciate any questions you may have.
Any questions?
No.
Okay. Hearing none, at this point, I'm going to ask other proponents of the motion. If they're in favor. Hearing then, call now for any opposition. Anybody on the line wants to oppose this?
Yes, sir, I am, I, uh, would like to oppose. I'm John Luciani. Uh, two seven six three three Butter Creek Road, Echo Oregon nine seven eight two six. And can everybody hear me? Very good. Uh, thank you all for, for listening. Um, I, I sit here and listen to Carla for this whole time, and I didn't realize that, uh, I didn't, I wasn't specific last time. Obviously, uh, the Planning Commission uh, voted against this in their wisdom. Uh, and may I just say upfront, I would hope that you would too. Uh, my big concern at the, at the, at the beginning, and I said it, I, I wished that everybody could visit the site before you voted on it because if you did visit it, you would obviously say, what is ODOT thinking? And how could this even be considered as a, as a, even a plan? I, I, uh, it's a blind corner, and yeah, you, you, over the years, I guess if you take some stuff out of there, uh, it wouldn't be, but I, I, uh, I just would wish that everybody could see this. You look on a map, and you think, oh, you know, it doesn't look too bad on the map. But if you drive there and you see this, you will, uh, if I was ODOT or Carla or anybody, if I would have looked at this, I would have immediately said, this is unacceptable, there is no way that this could be granted as even a, a consideration for a gravel pit. Uh, it is right out my back door, and I'm sure everybody here would not want a gravel pit going, uh, functioning and, uh, with the noise and, and the dust and everything, right out their back door. Uh, Tom Price's back door, uh, there's two houses very close, mine, my daughter's. Tom's is very close to the north. Uh, I guess I wasn't too specific last time, I'm trying to be specific this time. Uh, you talk about the, the traffic, and you say it's five years old. Obviously, have you driven in Hermiston, Oregon lately? Uh, have you? The, the traffic is phenomenal out here. Uh, there's traffic in the middle of the night, there's school buses. Uh, Andy Ashbeck has a, has a, uh, trucking business, uh, two miles south of us. They leave every morning, they come back every night. I have granddaughters who get on the bus. It comes in the morning, at night. Uh, there's cattle trucks constantly when they're running cows. There's, uh, I run a, uh, dryland wheat operation. I personally haul wheat. We will make, there's two trucks, uh, maybe ten loads a day, that's twenty loads, uh, back and forth there. We've got motorcycles, I'm a motorcycle guy. Uh, you'll see one, you'll see twenty. Uh, they're all flying, they like to go fast on this road. It's a very, it's a very popular road. Uh, we've got people working from all up and down the creek, going to jobs. There's traffic everywhere. There's traffic everywhere. My concern was, and possibly somebody I hope could answer this, I pray to God that, which I do every day, I pray that nobody gets hurt. But if somebody would get hurt, or heaven forbid a fatality, who would be liable? I want this question addressed today because this corner is unacceptable. It's, I can't imagine somebody even entertaining the idea of putting a gravel pit on a blind corner and thinking that it would work. My daughter, we all have animals here. We have chickens. We have turkeys. We have goats. We have bees. We have colts. We have cows. I have cisterns in the ground. I can't imagine blasting out my back door, what that would do to my house, let alone the dust and the noise. I can't be any more specific than that. I would like somebody to address who would be liable for injury and fatality, which, if this happens, and obviously, the planning commission in their wisdom voted against it, and I think the three people that allowed it, if they would have driven out here, they would have opposed it also. And I would like to hear some comments, please.
Well, as far as potential liability, if there is a contractor on site, there obviously would be a potential defendant. And also would be the state of Oregon, since it would be their property to mine. And so those are, just at the top of it, yes, there is potential liability there, and those would be the potential defendants.
That would be true at any pit, anywhere, any combination.
And as far as blasting, it's true, it applies, contracting party to stealing blasting would have potential liability as well as the state.
As far as running out of rock, I don't think that's an issue. There are quarries everywhere. There's one, two miles to the north of us, the Butter Creek Junction. There's Sidrid, I think, has a quarry, three miles south of us. There's, I think there's a Doherty Quarry. There's, they're all over. And they're all remote, for a good reason. You don't put a, you don't put a rock quarry right in the middle of a housing project or a housing division, and that's exactly what's going on here. There's rock available everywhere. This has not been used, like you say, since the 40s. I see no reason to have it here when you have rock everywhere available.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, at this point, I'm going to ask for rebuttal from the applicant.
Yes, Carla McLean, again, for the applicant. And I'll start, and then I know that Paul Howland will have some comment, probably Scott Billings, maybe Michelle Wright, and Teresa Penninger. So a couple of things on the blind corner. Commissioners, I would refer you to page 30 of the packet for this particular application. There is a map on, it's a page that shows a map with an aerial. The Butter Creek Road, just south of this quarry, does make a slow 90-degree turn, or nearly 90-degree turn. But at this point in time, there is a, there's a curve to the road. It's difficult for me to label it as a blind corner, because you can see for quite a distance prior to the quarry site and after the quarry site, going both northeast and south, or northwest and southeast along the road. So you can get a sense of the kind of the layout of the land there. The quarry on that page 30 is shown with red hatches in the middle of the big blue circle. So again, blind corner, I think, is an over, a significant overgeneralization of the curvature of the road at that particular point. Noise and dust has already been, it was addressed as part of the findings. Within the impact area, you know, ODOT will identify, they're required to manage noise. The contractors that would be in there doing the mining and crushing have to comply with the DEQ noise standards. Dust, they control fugitive dust. It's a requirement. Traffic counts, traffic has grown everywhere, but even if you apply the growth standards that happened between 97 and 2017 to 2021, you still have a traffic count that is probably well under 40 trips per day, and probably closer to 33 or 34. So even with the same growth applied, it's a pretty small average daily trip that's out there. As far as accidents, I failed to mention this previously. We also inquired about the crash data or crash history on this particular stretch of road, and there are no, there's no identified crashes or fatalities that have happened. And much like Mr. Luciani, I also pray that none would. But again, this area is not a residential area. There are residential uses in the area that are used either, that are allowed either outright or conditionally in the exclusive farm use zone. But mining and aggregate use is also a use that is allowed conditionally. And in this particular instance, we're seeking additional protections and goal five protections. And there are uses that can cohabitate and do in many, many, many places. So the lifetime of the quarry, why not until now? Because there have been other sources that ODOT have been using in the region. But they have identified that they need this resource. They purchased it in 1946 for a reason, and those reasons haven't changed. They have continuous needs to maintain the road network for both safety and preservation means, and are doing so. So I will, I will ask, whether it be Scott, or Paul, or Teresa, or Michelle, to also provide additional details to help answer the questions that have been raised.
I guess I'll go first. This is, oh, sorry, Paul, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, I appreciate it. So, good morning, commissioners. This is Paul Howland. I'm the assistant district manager with ODOT out of Pendleton District, 1327 Southeast Third Street in Pendleton, Oregon. I have previously managed the Hermiston section, so I'm aware of the location and traffic volumes and the area that Mr. Luciani is speaking to. I've driven that highway, and so I know the location we're talking about. But I wanted to just give a little bit of pretext to when we're talking about rock productions and specifically this pit, and why it's important that we have an ODOT-owned stockpile. I know that Mr. Luciani pointed out a lot of other private pits in the location, but when it comes to, I'll give a real-life example, a chip seal that we had out on Highway 207. And we need, I put together a rock production contract out of our district office here. And when that contract goes out, I try to list rock sources, ODOT rock sources, that are close to the location, because we want to get the best price on rock quantities for this, for our taxpayers. I mean, that's the whole goal of it. And unfortunately, specifically to Highway 207, the only contractor that bid was Anderson Construction, and they used their own material source and trucked it all the way from Pendleton all the way out to an area out there, because there was no ODOT material source available close to Highway 207 that made sense for them to set up and produce rock. So ultimately, we, ODOT, and taxpayers paid roughly $10 more per yard of rock. And so that adds up. So that's real-life money that costs to do work out there without a location. So I wanted to just give that specific example. And when we're talking about use of this pit, Carla was absolutely correct. It's not an everyday use. We're not talking about a stockpile site that we have trucks going in and out of constantly. When we're talking about, for me, a chip seal, we're talking eight to 12 years. So every eight to 12 years, we try to get in and do a chip seal over top of what we've done. So it may be another 10 years before we would need to use it again. Now, there could be some other instances where the local maintenance crew needs to get in there to get some material, to build up shoulders, to fix some abrupt edges out on Highway 207, that they would use that for. And I would expect them to be able to use that. So I just wanted to address that. We don't have rock sources available everywhere. There are private ones, yes, and that costs us a lot more money to use private ones. And we don't, we don't have the access to use all the private pits that we want either. And I could give another example, I could give a lot of examples of pits located on our state highways throughout the state. You know, another local pit out on Highway 730, you talk about traffic volumes out on Butter Creek, not even in comparison to Highway 730. If anybody's driven Highway 730, the traffic volumes are extreme out there, and we have a pit located right on the highway that we operate the same manner that we would be here with no issues whatsoever. So appreciate your time. Thank you.
Wanted to speak on that from ODOT as well?
Yes, I will. This is Scott Billings. I'm with ODOT, 63055 North Highway 97 in Bend, Oregon. And Paul kind of basically took my speech, but that's fine. I can add on to it. Again, the material source network that ODOT owns or controls throughout the state is based on just a couple principles. One is that the shorter the distance, the less fuel it takes, the cheaper the rock is, and then the more miles that we can pave. It also gives us basically an insurance policy that material is available 24 hours a day, in case there's an emergency due to a landslide on the west side, river washout on the east side, rock falls everywhere else. It allows that material to be, we know it's there and can be used to get the highway back open. There, again, I used to be, for 12, 14 years, I was with the statewide material source program, and so I've seen this everywhere. There is a misconception that rock is available. Look how many quarries there are. ODOT can just go in there and buy rock whenever we want. And that's absolutely not correct, because, one, they could be, you know, friendly, friendly commercial source and give us a rock. They could be friendly, and they're just too busy and don't have any to spare. Or they can be, you know, into it for profit, and they will sell it for twice as much. If ODOT's not doing the paving, and say, name any company you know that does paving, if that company wants to go get a rock from a source that's owned by their competition, it's going to be three times as much. So, you know, these aren't actual figures. I like to try to talk facts, but, you know, you can see that a competitor is not going to give rock to his competitor for what they can make it for. So again, the insurance of ODOT having these sources is what drives, I mean, we absolutely need it, or we're out of business. We will be able to pave only, you know, a fraction of what we need to if we're paying twice as much for the rock. I'll just point out one more time with the traffic. I mean, ODOT, as well as the county, I mean, this is what we do. We sign, we flag, we know curvatures of roads, site distances, all that. So I don't see an issue with operating in the source with the curve in that road. And if it turns out, when we apply with the county to be able to use the county road to come out of this quarry, if it's determined that, you know, say, a two-trailer truck can't pull out of there without hitting the other lane, then that's when signage or flagging would be pointed out, and we would adhere to that. So that's all I have for this point.
Thank you. Was there any other ODOT folks that wanted to speak?
Yes, can you hear me? This is Teresa Penninger. One of the comments that I heard Mr. Luciani mention was, there's no reason to have the quarry here. One thing to point out is that it's been here since 1946. It is a quarry. It was, you know, it's out there, purchased property. We could go in and, on a conditional use permit request, and basically get rock out of it. What we're trying to do here is identify it as a significant site for the various reasons that's been brought up, and that in doing so, we're willing to also protect the site and also the people that, folks that may want to come in and use the land or surrounding it, so that we can have a letter of remonstrance to say, hey, there is a site here. It may not look like it that we're using it now, but we may use it in the future, and ensure that everybody's aware of what's going on, and that we will make sure that, you know, the notifications and things, and the conditions that go along with it will be brought to the property owners. So I just wanted to make sure that was aware. The quarry is here. It's been here since 1946, and we're just trying to get the significance designation as well as the limited protections that we've identified.
At this time, I just want to go back to item number two, which was call for extensions, bias conflict interest, declaration of ex parte, and objections to jurisdiction. I only bring that up due to the witness list on rebuttals.
Thank you, Commissioner Schaefer. At this time, I do need to make sure that I disclose that my wife works for ODOT in the same office as Mr. Howland, and just wanted to make sure that that was clear. Does not affect how I participate.
Thank you. Okay, any other rebuttals from ODOT? Any questions from the board?
Sir, may I make another comment? John Luciani, please. Yes, I don't have the luxury of having any county roads.
There's not an opportunity for opponent testimony after.
After the rebuttal, there's no coming.
After the rebuttal.
Mr. Luciani, I apologize. There is no comment section at this time.
Well, I didn't know that. I'm sorry. I got some more to say. I don't know what it would hurt. I didn't realize. I didn't know how this works.
Right. And that's why you had your opportunity to speak, and then the applicant was in to have a rebuttal response. So they rebutted what your comments were. So if you had more to say, the time to say that was when you had the floor.
Well, I'm a dirt farmer. I'm sorry. I don't know how this works. This is my first time. I'm sorry.
So at this time, the board, we have a couple of options. You can do a continuance or keep the record open. Is there any preference? Okay. Hearing none, at this time, I'm going to go ahead and close the hearing, and we'll go into deliberation and decision. Any deliberations?
I sympathize and empathize with Mr. Luciano, but I also recognize that this pit has been designated by ODOT for a gravel pit since 1943. I also understand that it's not a full-time commercial pit, and that this I also understand that it's not a full-time commercial pit, and that this request actually is only to identify it in the Gold Five process. There are other processes and permits that will still be needed for this to be actually used, including from the county planning, if I'm correct. And I think this is just the first step, and I, maybe Bob can correct me.
Yeah, I can speak to that a little bit. Basically, if your decision today was to approve the quarry site as a Gold Five-protected resource site, that basically gives them the ability to go in and mine the site as long as they obtain a zoning permit from our office. Those are over-the-counter permits. So anytime they wanted to go in and use the site, they would obtain a zoning permit prior to doing that. But as I mentioned before, if you chose to approve it and designate it as a significant site and protect the resource, it could be used for mining.
Which could be done on a conditional use permit.
So, no, a conditional use permit would be, is done for small significant sites, so sites that don't meet the criteria for it to be established as a large site. Or if they chose to come in and do like a one-time use, they could obtain a conditional use permit. But if it has the Gold Five designation, there would be no need to get a conditional use permit.
Perfect. Thank you.
That takes the place of it.
Yeah, exactly what I was thinking. The Gold Five is a critical program and established for this reason. I also appreciate everything that the Planning Commission recommended, and I understand that they have a tough job. There's no doubt about it. But without factual findings, I don't, I can't go against the request at this point.
And likewise, correct? I think you just referenced the Commissioner, Doran, that the Planning Commission voted against it, but without substantiation or substantive.
Yeah, that's correct. So, you know, they were sympathetic to Mr. Lucioni's concerns, which I think we all are. But the role of the Planning Commission and the commissioners is to determine whether or not those substantive criteria approval are met. And if the applicant you feel meets those applicable criteria found in the administrative rule in Yumitilla County Development Code, you're obligated to approve the request. However, if there's a reason you feel that, if there's some criteria you feel that they don't meet, then you could make a finding to that effect, that they don't meet it, and you could deny the request. But staff's recommendation or the staff report shows that our feeling was that the applicant met the substantive criteria of approval. So that's what the role of the Planning Commission was. And as staff, we felt they didn't, it was more based on, I guess, feelings and emotion rather than denying it or recommending denial based on those criteria.
So on the facts and face of the matter, does the applicant meet the criteria?
Well, that's for you guys to determine. Staff's recommendation was that they did meet it, and then, like I said, the Planning Commission failed to really make a finding to that effect.
Thank you.
So what I understand from what you just told us, we really don't have an option.
You have an option.
I was going to make a decision based on emotion.
Yeah, your decision should be based on whether or not the criteria are met.
That's, yep.
And the criteria was, is that what I understand it was just not met?
That's your decision.
Okay, fair enough. Understood.
From looking at criteria, going through the report extensively and then listening to the testimony, I have found no area that hasn't been met in the criteria.
Are you willing to make a motion?
I would. I don't have the ordinance.
Counsel, do you have that? I like to my paperwork. I didn't see it.
It's not on the.
It's in the document. It's in the back of the document?
No.
No, that's the need of minutes from.
Here it is.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to move for approval of ordinance number 2021-10.
Motion second, and there you go, discussion. All prepare the motion. Say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate your time today. So, Mr. Chair, I'll turn the gavel back over to you.
Do you perceive a need for a break?
Yes.
We'll take a five-minute break.
Commissioners, this is Carla McLean. Thank you for your time today. It's much appreciated.
Thank you.
Actually, and I explained to Commissioner Doran, but our past procedure was that when we have planning hearings, the liaison commissioner takes care of those.
Now we're going to go to the panel.
Right, we are now at the Boardman Connector strategic report presentation.
And that should be Megan Green.
Megan Green, are you doing that?
Yes, I am. Good morning, Commissioners. Megan Green, Transit Coordinator. The Hermiston to Boardman Connector strategic report was developed by Kittleson and Associates. They did this under the direction of CTUIR for Kayak. This Boardman Connector to Hermiston route was identified as a valuable transit route in our 2018 Morrow County and Yumitila County Transit Development Strategy Plan. This plan was also developed by Kittleson, so they did have some background information on what went into the thought process with this transit route. The strategic plan heavily focused on getting employees to their place of work from their hometown or from their nearby stop from their home. Kittleson worked with CTUIR, Morrow County, and Yumitila County in order to develop this report, and there were several stakeholder meetings. These were open to the public, but due to COVID, they were held remotely. They were held from February to June of 2021. And in June, the plan was finalized. Morrow County and CTUIR have adopted this plan, and so the presentation today is for the Board of Commissioners to adopt the plan for Yumitila County as well. The main objective of the Boardman Connector is to help to get employees to their place of work. On the next, oh, yep, you're on the right side. I can barely see it there. As you can see, a majority of employees that work in Boardman and Irgan live in Hermiston, which is Yumitila County City, and so that's a main driver of why Yumitila County was brought into this, is to help get Hermiston residents to their place of work, even though they may work outside of Yumitila County. The next page there identifies AM routes, some early AM routes. The Boardman Connector, it was decided that a counterclockwise route and a clockwise route would be best, dependent on where people live versus where they work. That way, both people would be served. The plan identifies several different routes. I've shown the early AM schedule routes, but there's also some limited funding options that were available. There's a lot of different options in the plan. I didn't provide them all to you today just because there's a lot of information. Some other possible route schedules are identified on the next page to give you a better idea of what this would look like. More times could be available and added if funding allows. This would include a Sunday service, which Kayak does not currently provide. They don't provide Sunday service now just because they would need more employees, they would need more funding. Right now, it's not an option, but it could be with this plan if funding becomes available later. On the next page, there are some other stops that are located within the city of Hermiston. These would be stops that the Boardman Connector makes in order to connect with existing transit routes for Hermiston residents. Some of these are the Heart and the Hopper, which are already operated by Kayak. The Heart is a loop within the city of Hermiston, while the Hopper travels between the tribal lands, the city of Pendleton, the city of Stanfield, the city of Hermiston, Yumitila, and McNary. So it makes quite a few stops. It also connects with the Loop in Morrow County and the Greyhound stop that's located at Pilot Travel Center, and all of those travel to many different areas. Greyhound goes all the way to Salt Lake City. Finally is the big question of funding. So the strategic report was funded with the 2019 and to 2021 STIF formula funds. The report identifies future funding opportunities, which includes several federal grants available to both counties and to CTUIR, and future STIF cycles for both counties. The Hermiston and Boardman Connector received some grant funding from the 2021 to 2023 STIF formula funds, which is in place effective this past July. They received funds from both Yumitila and Morrow Counties in order to move forward with getting this route developed. More federal grants are available to support this project. The grants vary for route planning, even bus purchasing, operations, and bus facilities. Adopting the strategic report is recommended by staff. The adoption of this plan will help both Yumitila County and the other Morrow County and CTUIR secure future funding for this, not only the project planning aspects, but bus purchasing and actually funding the route itself in the future, once it gets up and going. Thank you for your time this morning. Are there any questions for staff?
Question.
Go ahead.
Megan, the only, the question I have, and after going through this report and kind of some of the discussions during the meetings leading up to this, there is flexibility built into what you're presenting. I mean, if a route needs to move by two hours, this isn't a hard and fast.
No, it's not. And really, that decision will be made by Kayak since they're going to be providing the service. This was just to provide a general idea. You're correct.
When you say the decision's made by Kayak, is there a kind of a steering committee or oversight group that helps that, or do they just do it through consultation with the cities?
So there, right now, we're meeting quarterly-ish to discuss how that funding is going to become available, what the schedule's going to look like. Right now, there's not a steering committee set up for that. Because Kayak is the one providing the service, they do have the ability to, you know, if they don't have a driver available, they may have to adjust their schedules.
Thanks, Megan. And what, well, for the stiff world, it's, thank you for taking it on.
Yeah, thank you.
My comment, my question, I think, was relatively similar. There is, it must be a periodic review process. Is there to determine whether or not these work? I mean, what seems like a good idea sometimes as far as a route or whatever may in actuality not attract riders. So do we ever talk about review, those kind of things?
So the STIF funds get reviewed biannually, so every two years. So at that point, part of the process is that the Board of Commissioners adopts the STIF formula fund plan. So the board decides which projects get funding at that point. This project, the Boardman Connector, already receives some funds for the next two years from that plan. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion that we adopt the Hermiston to Boardman Connector strategic report.
Second motion.
All fair and say aye?
Aye.
I just reminded in my days at the school, so I pretended I used to get complaints from people who noticed that as a bus got towards the end of its route, it didn't have very many kids left on it.
There better be any.
And then I hope by the time it got to the end of its route, it didn't have any. All right, I'm sorry. Solid Waste Franchise.
Gina Miller should have that.
Gina, you're there, aren't you? I see you.
Gina.
Okay.
Maybe Doug can answer the questions, too.
Well, sure. Basically, what is going on here is Desert Winds.
Commissioners, can you hear me now?
Ah, now we can.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Gina Miller, and I am the staff liaison for the Solid Waste Advisory Committee. And what we have brought for you today for your consideration is an application for, it's a little misleading in that it says it's a new application for a franchise, but what in fact it is, is the same franchise that was prior operated by Sanitary Disposal and Desert Winds, has been purchased by Waste Connections. And so this application is to transfer essentially the franchise from one company to another. This was brought before the Solid Waste Advisory Committee last week on October 12th. They subsequently voted in unis, or unanimously voted to approve it for recommendation to the board for final consideration. I hear if you have any questions. I would like to add that the franchise, Solid Waste Connections, has submitted an appropriate application and has paid all the fees associated with this activity.
I have one question. This franchise agreement, or is it transfer the date of application back to Desert Winds?
Basically, the way this is written, it takes over, so it's a brand-new franchise for the new company. Because it's under Waste Connections, Oregon, statute, a transfer of a franchise is the same as a new franchise, is the way the statutes, or the ordinance is written.
The service area will not change, and the services provided currently to the residents that they, that sanitary disposal service will not change. Everything will remain the same.
Okay, but my, I guess my question is, the sanitary disposal rates that are in place now, do they have an expiration date?
No, 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 until you approve a new rate.
Okay.
So there's not any specific.
There's not a, it's a process, it's not a fine process.
No, right. When they believe they need to, they raise the come before you for an increase.
Okay.
So they take over the existing.
Perfect. That's.
And Commissioner Doran, I might, I might add that this application, if approved, is for a 10-year period, which is a rolling 10 years, and every year, all of the franchises that we have in Yumitila County submit their applications for renewal to add, you know, another year to that 10-year rolling application for franchise approval.
Okay. Thank you, Gina.
You say aye?
Aye.
Oh, there's two, okay, so there's two.
There are two separate actions required here, because you are, the first page has it.
Oh, sorry.
And I guess this, it's the two requested actions, the two different orders.
Oh, I see that now, yeah.
One's for the collection, one's for disposal.
Yeah, I do, or slows down. But I, I would move to probably back and do that again by
number.
I'm good with that.
I, I'd move to adopt order number BC2021-075.
Second.
All fair and say aye?
Aye.
Chair move.
Second.
All fair and say aye?
Aye.
All right.
The next is a purchase, purchase container for.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mark Tanner, Facilities Manager, Yumitila County. So I have before you the purchase of a shipping container for the storage of the snow equipment that will be kept at Stafford Hansel. I initially looked at getting like a single-car garage from Old Hickory Sheds, and that was almost $10,000. And I also looked at metal buildings from the coast-to-coast metal structures in Stanfield, and that was a little over $11,000. So that I backed up and went back to the shipping container idea. I did, at Commissioner Doran's request, talk to BMCC about potentially storing it in their maintenance shed, which is right next to Stafford Hansel, and they stated that they did not have any room in there to put any more equipment. I also talked to the planning commission with the city of Hermiston to see if there was any requirements for the shipping container, and they really didn't have anything specific other than if it could be one color. So the, I have two options. One is 5733, and that's from Northwest Container Sales in Boardman. Availability is unknown, but anywhere from the end of October to the middle of November. He does not have any on-site right now. They're waiting for more to show up. The other option is from Container Sales out of La Grande, and he has three on-sites, but the cost is a little bit more at $66.70.
Do you have pictures of either of those, or the?
I, I do not. They're going to look similar to the two containers that State Courts has across the street in the parking lot. The color may be different, but basically, it's going to be that size.
My concern, and I already told you this, Mark, is the containers, they come in all varieties, and they, they're all the same size, and they all start out looking the same, but they, they don't all end up look, at the end, looking the same on the resale. And I, we have a nice, beautiful facility there. Blue Mountain has a nice facility. The National Guard has a great-looking facility. I'm not against the container. I just want to make sure that we're getting one that, that's not going to be an eyesore, or the least amount of eyesore as possible, whether it's painted one color, and we put a Yumitila County logo on it to make sure that, I mean, if we're going to put our logo on something, we probably want it to look pretty good, and.
I know the one coming from Northwest Container Sales is a one-use container, so it, it brought something over, and then that was the only use for it. The ones in La Grande, I have seen those. They appear to, they're probably, I'm going to say eight, eight-year-old, if I was going to guess. I mean, they're not, they're not beat up bad, but, you know, the paint has faded. You know, they've obviously been used. The other option, you know, we could, if we went with the, you know, the older shipping container, you know, we could potentially side it with, you know, some form of siding, wood siding, metal siding, to make it look better.
If you went with the newer one, could you use the, kind of the impound yard there until it got there for whatever equipment you needed to store, until, until the other one arrived?
I could, yes.
Is that, is that that weed patch, but behind Stafford Hansel?
Yeah, there's, there's kind of, I think Mark probably knows this in Dan, too. There's, I'm not, I, I know you were talking about putting it next to the impound yard or the cyclone fence there. I know without having any plans, that's probably not a bad idea, but, I mean, there's power and water right there, so you probably could put power to your, to the container there without any, any big issue. But are we blocking something that we may need to use that for in the future? I, I'm all for bringing it in and putting there, getting the power hooked up to it so it has lighting and everything else inside of it, because it is available. And, but I, I have a big concern on, I, I want to make sure that we have the nicest-looking one we can get, and the most usable.
Yeah, then I would say that would be the Northwest Container Sales, because it is a one-use, so it would be in the best condition, for sure.
We used to have the, the mobile office that's up at the EOTech Mall, used to be the.
Where was it?
Right, where we were just talking about putting this one.
Mr. Chair, I have approval to purchase a used container from Northwest Container Services in the amount of $5,733.
And that's the new, that's the one-use one?
I, no. I would prefer, if possible, I know that that's the best price out there, but I'm not sure it's the best container.
Mark, is that the one that's the single-use container?
That's the single-use container, yeah.
$5,733?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Second.
All fair and say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mark.
To be clear, we have purchased the one that's in the best condition.
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right, item number seven, issue of a position. Dan, are you going to do that?
Yes, sir. Commissioners, before you, is a position to replace our original position. We used to have our law library and record specialist, and she retired a while back, and the office, our records office is required to be open to all times of receive recordings. And with just two in the office there now, if one is on vacation and somebody's sick, we're kind of in a bind. So we, we need a third person. And in the last few years, I sent out some stuff earlier, that the amount of recordings have just skyrocketed, and we've been receiving way more than we anticipated in recording fees, too. So the online, we're doing so many things online now, and it's unbelievable with COVID, but they are super busy with all online recordings, and we need assistance with that. So that's what's before you. A part-time position, $28,000. This is a non-benefited, a 19-hour-a-week position, and so there wouldn't be any benefits with that. And how we would use it would be to set up a schedule, and then when, it'd be a little less than the 19 hours, and when there is vacation or sick timed, then that person would, would come in and fill, backfill those times. And then we could also use that person in case we need extra help in elections, too, on the big elections and stuff. So we, it's a well-needed position.
I think that was my question. I'm assuming that the, the primary assignment of this individual is to records, but in actuality, it's to administrative services. Is that correct?
Yes, it would be base, yes, that is true, but most of the time, it will be records, just in case we have other things that we need to do. And the person, to maximize our department and the use of this person, we may pull them to elections or other things, yeah.
I guess I would want to make that really clear, that it's assigned to administrative services, but the primary station, records, because sometimes when that happens, people have a tendency to forget what the original intent was.
Right, correct.
So that becomes a matter of record, right?
What we might want to do is add that to the job description.
In the job description, we do say assist with elections down there. I mean.
I just want to limit that to elections.
We have down in other duties of the position, which is the last page, right before requirements for position. Will, one will be help processing mail, the mailroom down here. Two would be to assist county elections and the BOTA clerk from time to time, and other duties as assigned.
I think what the question is, and I may be wrong, but I think under supervisor relationships, it says, it currently states works under the general direction of the chief records officer who outlines goals, objectives, and reviews work performance for effectiveness. I think what Commissioner Murdock is correcting or wrong, is talking about is somewhere in there would fall under the admin services division. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
We can make that change.
Another quick question, Dan. Sounds like this is a replacement position, so will this involve IT expenses, or is all of that already in place in records?
So we moved all Beverly's duties. We farmed out everything except for the assistance with the records office doing the recording, so they'd be a recording clerk, which is a trained skill. And the other one was manning the mountain free water office on Tuesdays. That, that's something that we, we just can't seem to do right now. That was another duty. But the law library, we're transferring to Pendleton. The purchasing, we split between John Fowler and Jolene Meadows. And there was a couple other things she did that we've, we farmed out to other people. So we've, these are the last two things that we weren't able to farm out, was the records, recording, and the, where am I at again, with the mountain free wire office. So at this point, we're not planning to do anything there on Tuesdays, and that's something for a later discussion.
I guess I wasn't like clear on my question. My, my question is, are we going to have another, is she going to be able to use the IT, whether it be computers, phones, and all those types of stuff, that was left, or are we going to have another expense in?
Oh, oh, no, there, there's equipment in the office from, from Valerie's position there. So there's a desk there, and, and her spot, phone, computer, scanner, it's all still there.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry about that. I wasn't sure what, clear on that.
Oh, no, good. So Commissioner Schaefer, did you feel comfortable in getting the answer about removing the territorial nature of, of oversight?
Oh, I was clarifying your question, so I'm good.
We're both good, okay.
Mr. Chair, I have an approval for creation of a record specialist position to follow the admin services at range 16, work up to 19 hours per week without benefits affecting immediately.
Second.
All fair and say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Item number eight has been removed. Item number nine. Item number nine is Mr. Fellows.
Yes, yeah.
But we don't know that for sure. I haven't seen you in person, but.
We'll trust him.
Good morning, Commissioners. Before you today is a, Tom Fellows, Public Works Director. Before you today is a request from the city of Pendleton to install a gate on a county right-of-way. Currently, this right-of-way is not, not in use for anything. It's, it's an old road, the old airport road. The take, it, the old origin of it, it takes off right across from the Public Works Department and connects to the airport. The city's request is to simply gate off their property on this, on this piece of right-of-way with a connection to the current airport road up at the top. Their plan is, this is where their new water tank and water facility is going to go, and they, they're just simply trying to secure the facility, and figured that the best way to do it was to just gate off the whole property.
Mr. Chair, I have an approval of application for placement of gate on Old Airport Road and Sanfield.
Second.
All fair and say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
You're sticking around.
All right. The next item is approval for the payment of, the city of Pendleton for the permit for the jail remodel. Do we need to, is Dan done that?
Move for approval of the expenditure for all permits, $10,100 permits from the city of Pendleton.
Have a different amount. Remind $11,224.06.
Reminds $10,100. I'm sorry, I was on dispatch table. My bad.
This is $11,224.06 for the record.
I make the motion for approval.
Second.
All fair and say aye?
Aye.
All right. Final item on our agenda is the board schedule. A proposal that the first board meeting for November be moved to the 10th.
Second.
All fair and say aye?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. All right, Commissioner comments?
None, Commissioner, thanks.
No, thank you.
Commissioner?
Already?